Welcome, everyone. It's September 27th, 2022. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call to order at 5 o'clock PM. I'm Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor. Next to me in the room is...
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads and Utilities.
Online.
Mike Ettington, Co-Chair and Land Use Supervisor.
Thank you, everyone. Amanda's excused today. And we have any, do we have any disclosures to finish off the meeting from last week?
I have the same disclosure for item number two that I had last time. My, uh, my spouse is the Vice Chair, I believe, of the Treasurer maybe of Girdwood Trails Plan, of Girdwood Trails Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
We covered that last time, I think.
We did, and I would rule the same as I did last week for the same reasons, so not excluding you from participating in discussion. My, um, Guy?
Yep. I am, um, my wife is still part of the Four Valleys group, and so I know we're reviewing that.
Okay.
Just, um...
Thank you, Guy. And that's under new business?
Old business, right?
Uh, number three, the, so old business, number three.
Oh, thank you.
Brands, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Guy. And I would rule that's not a conflict of interest in today's meeting. So we're not making any decisions today. Jennifer?
Jennifer, second part of all statements of last week about trails.
Thank you for those disclosures. And I would rule the same as last week, that it's not a conflict of interest, that you could participate in today's discussion and make any decisions. Mike, could you have the chair for a moment for my disclosure?
I will take the chair.
Thank you. I have the same disclosures regarding the Trails Committee as last week, participating in meetings as far as listening goes on the Girdwood Northern Ski Club Board.
Yeah, again, since nothing has changed this last meeting, we'll do the same as last time. There's no, no significant conflict. You can participate. Have the chair back.
Thank you. All right. Agenda revisions and approval. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda of this special meeting, continuing, continuation of our September regular meeting.
I'd move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, do you have a second?
Close second.
All right. Any objections? Okay, announcements. The public is encouraged and to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Girdwood Valley Service Area Nonprofit Recreation Grant Presentations Meeting will be held Wednesday, next Wednesday, October 5th at 7:00 PM. introductions, number one. And everyone tonight, just as a reminder, we have a lot still to cover under new business, so try to keep moving along. Uh, update of housing developments in Girdwood, including Holton Hills, and update from the Holton Hills Housing Advisory Committee. Anyone want to take the first part of that?
Uh, I'll, I'll take it very briefly. So, um, I think as most people are probably aware, there was a housing, uh, sorry, a Heritage Land Bank Advisory Committee meeting last Thursday in Elmer Road, Anchorage, which was very well attended by Girdwood residents. The only item of action they had was to approve the land disposal for the multiple tracts for Holton Hills. I think there were about 30 people spoke from Girdwood pretty well, very well, actually. It was a really good, really good set of testimony. The commissioners listened to the testimony. They started discussing the resolution. There were a couple amendments proposed, the resolution, and they postponed the rest of the discussion to next month. The meeting had gone on over three and a half, about three and a half hours at that point. So, um, there's no action from HLB Advisory Commission, and my understanding is until they do get an action, HLB won't be doing anything either. So, um, I think that means that platting action is perhaps going to be postponed a little bit longer. It definitely won't be before the HLB Advisory Commission action, which cannot be before the end of, um, uh, October.
Thank you, Mike. And to add, I think we received an email today that there is a work session...
Yes, sorry.
13th?
Yeah, I believe there's a work session on the 13th, although I have not seen that publicly noticed yet. So that, that's been, I think it's been scheduled, but it hasn't been officially stated. So they would not act in the work session, but I think there would be, there would typically be, be a meeting in the last week of October where they could act. So I think they're just trying to go through the material because there was so much presented.
Okay. Guy has a comment or question?
Question. Um, so that's HLB Commission Work Session?
The Advisory Commission, yes. The HLB Advisory Commission, yes. Yes, the seven commissioners.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. And update from the HHAC? Brooke, are you giving an update or you don't need? Okay, thank you.
Basically what Mike said. Everybody came to the meeting, um, the HLB meeting, yeah. It was awesome.
Kyle, were you joined?
Well, there is a regular meeting of the advisory group this Wednesday at 4:00 tomorrow. And, uh, and then we did receive an email from, um, Sam that him and Emma are scheduled to meet with the developers Thursday at 2:00 PM. So I think that's what tomorrow's meeting will probably lead to.
I'm going to that meeting in the keynote.
Oh, Emma's going, okay. So Brooke and Sam are going to that meeting, so. So, uh, so those are the next two steps.
Thank you. Okay. Good to have that update. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Any public comment today? Online? I see and hearing none. We'll move to old business number one. Follow-up on Aliaska Highway Interchange Review and Discuss Letter to be drafted by GBOS to DOT. Jennifer?
So Mike and I both met with DOT this morning, and I think it was really productive conversation. But it actually put us on a little bit of limbo because they're going back to the drawing board this phase, at least to try to figure out what to do. So I think Mike and I both agreed that, uh, we'd be, we'd be better to wait on the letter until we hear back from it, they might, might not be able to answer. And kind of one of the main things that we tried to express is the community concern about the Trump design. So, and support for the bridge and the roundabout design. So we tried to give some kudos, and they are gonna take another look at, maybe if I'm correct, Mike, I think they're gonna take another look at around or diamond design. And just see if there's a way to meet that. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add to?
Though that was, I mean, it was, there were lots of discussion and lots of, um, lots of explanations about different aspects of the project, and they did a good, uh, a good explanation of why they ended up with that and some of the difficulties of other designs. But, uh, I would agree completely with what Jen said. They're gonna, I think they've heard quite strongly that they should look more at the diamond and give that a little bit more thought to see what's feasible. Um, and then we expect them, I think that, didn't they say they had a meeting internally later this week? And then we should expect something back within a couple of weeks. And that may be that they're still looking at some choices, so we may not get a definitive answer. But they also said they did not, sorry. They, uh, one also said that they did not actually require, they did not require a response from us. They would be looking for a response from GBOS before their presentation to, I think, Planning and Zoning or somebody on, um, in December. So it's possible we could act as late as November, but I think we should probably try and discuss this and hopefully have an answer next month.
The only thing I was gonna add is they did make it clear they're still in the design phase, so it sounded like they're still flexing.
Yes. And there are some details that will be too early to discuss as well.
Kyle?
Uh, I'll just share that, uh, the Forest Service arranged a meeting last week with the same design team, and I was invited, and our primary discussion was focused on the Lower Ditterot Trail, connecting it. And we were able to provide all the historical documents and the phases that we were working on. And fortunately, the railroad was there. And we found a lot of positive support, especially with this realignment changing. And then using the old rideaway, which is currently now Aliaska Highway as potential parking, and then a trailhead going through there, and even got into the, you know, the preliminary discussion of possibly a pedestrian tunnel that goes underneath, um, the new road and then connects, uh, basically comes into a T with the, the Aliaska bike path that goes north and the Bird Gird. So, um, they seem real positive about that. So, so hopefully, uh, you know, I, I expressed the support for things that we liked in the plan, and I also talked about the trumpet swan, the trumpeter swan, as I call it, um, being, uh, not supported. So I'm glad you guys had that discussion with them today. So I'm glad to see them working with the community closely on this and trying to get down to something that we all can digest.
Guy?
The, uh, the design in the package, is that something that we, somebody on the board put together? Or just in case people ask, is that, um...
Yeah, that was drawn, I think, by Amanda.
Okay.
In order to sort of facilitate this discussion, but that was before the rest of this discussion evolved, so.
So something similar to this, but more complicated is being considered. But it's also still, it's still angled over. I think that is what it is. But anyway, uh, there's a lot of questions about how that would work at the intersection. But first, we have to figure out, do the diamond design? And then we figure out whether or not to put roundabouts there or stop signs or whatever. So they said there were three different options for stops there if they could make. But the other part of this that's not quite right is they do have to extend farther south. So it would be a divided highway, and there would be another crossing over Nation Creek, right, Mike? So, uh, there are issues with the speed and the, through traffic. And so anyway, it would be a two-crossing thing. So their argument, one of their arguments is that it's more impactful in a way if you extend a divided highway down. The overall area of impact is larger, and the argument that Mike and I were trying to make is that the trumpet design is impactful in a different way, particularly emotionally and environmentally. And, uh, I don't know, psychologically too, in that entrance to Girdwood looks and feels like something better suited to, well, still, uh, still...
Yeah, just to, just to, sorry, just to add to that, the, I, I think they said that's one of the choices. There's still a possibility it could fit with having a single bridge, but it'd probably require a double bridge. But long-term, the goal is to have, um, a divided highway anyway. So that would be, you know, so it'd require either replacement of the bridge or a second bridge next to it. So the question is, does that part of the divided highway actually get implemented as part of this intersection change?
Thank you all for the updates, and thank you for meeting with, with DOT. And I know from what I've heard, they are happy to meet with anyone that would like to have a meeting. So if any of us, no community members that want to speak to them, they're open to having a meeting with them. I'm also thinking about it a lot now when I turn in, and today it was high, high tide, and right there was just old water, so it's hard to picture where I think it is supposed to be. Pretty different. Uh, anything else on this item? Do we need a formal motion to postpone it to next month? Or I don't think we have any objection here?
No, I'd move that we postpone the discussion or the action until next month's regular meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any oppositions? Okay, thank you all. We'll come back to this next month with a little bit more, perhaps. Number two, Girdwood Trails Committee requests for clarification of the GBOS January 31st deadline for the Girdwood Trails Plan. So, uh, you were all here for all of these meetings, so I will try to skip the historical part. But, um, Margaret has the outline for the Trails Committee members to recommend changes to the Trails Plan that is out right now. So if you look on the screen or in your packet on four, A and B is what it's stated currently. But because they would like, they also want clarification here, and they had, they submitted three questions, the Trails Committee, to us. So I could read just the beginning right here. Once completed with Girdwood Trails Committee members' requested changes, A, Girdwood Trails will vote on the plan as amended by themselves, Girdwood Trails Committee. So that's what they're doing right now. They're at four A right now. And please correct me, Kyle, if I state, state. So this is a process that's taking a very long time, and they have 16-ish amendments to go. But last meeting was pretty quick, because they got through a lot of the meat of other ones in previous meetings. And then B, if the amended plan is accepted by Trails Committee, it will move forward in the approval process to ultimately get to the assembly. But before that, it has to go through our Girdwood process and then Heritage Land Bank, Planning and Zoning. So the potential suggestion between four A and B, uh, because we said in our motion right there, you go to the motion, the existing red line plan as well as amended plan will go forward for consideration by the community as a whole. Some may argue that the red line plan already went to the community because the community is always invited to the Trails meetings, and they're always open to the public. And that is the plan that they're amending right now. So the red line plan was voted down. They've been amending it for months. And there, hopefully, we just said, let's give them a deadline, which was what our motion was. But that's where it gets tricky. So I wrote a little bit of narrative, and then I made a, another suggestion, which is more complex because it would include another, quote, "public process" and a, or "public review." And the, the way that the public review was last time was a lot of staff time and a whole mission back and forth. So I have listed four A through F. Uh, a way more process, I guess. And then some, some may think that the process they're doing right now is just as thorough as what's going on here. And then the last two questions I've answered potentially. But we could go to question number one first. Do you want to need clarification so far?
Sorry, was there any need for clarification?
Mm-hmm.
On what the question is?
So their first question they would like answered is, what does the deadline of January 31st include? So...
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mike.
I have a comment on that. Well, I have a general comment, first of all. I think when we were discussing this in the meeting, I can't remember which month it was, Mayish. I think we all had a very clear idea of exactly what we were voting on, but I'm not sure we all had the identical idea. I think as it's, it's become clearer that there's, there's a lot more complexity and a lot more nuance than we discussed at the time. So I don't think what we're going to be talking about today is changing what we did before. I think it's just clarifying what we said before. That was the first thing. And what I was thinking at the time was that, um, the red line, so-called red line plan, uh, was drafted by subcommittee, um, went to the whole community for public comment. Those public comments were compiled by staff, some revisions suggested. The revisions got group by group accepted, I think, except for one, accepted by the GTC. And then we, we end up basically with a full candidate plan that's gone through full public process. And my, the principle I would like to follow is that if there's a second plan which comes out of there, it's gone through an equivalent level of public process. So, um, the, there was this broad public comment with lots of input. If that's been compiled down, and then there's a smaller group which can then make changes to that without, with any chance of public review, then that doesn't feel like it's the same level of process. So the principle I'd like to follow, but reality may get in the way. But the principle I'd like to follow is that they've gone through the same level of, they're at kind of the same level of authority and review by the broader community. Now, there are some practical questions there, and obviously, since the new plan is probably gonna look like the old plan in many respects, just a small set of differences, we wouldn't need to go through a full one-month or however long it was, 40-day, um, public review process. We could definitely shorten that. But I'd like, my principle would be, I'd like them to be at the same level of review and, um, and community input.
Thank you, Mike. Any thoughts after that, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Or your hands? Yes.
My thought is that, um, first of all, the plans are not necessarily equal, but this one had already been through the meetings right there before it ever. So I'm not sure it has to then be ground to the same extent again at the end because it was already a certain amount of sauce, and the time arrives. Sorry, that metaphor is being flogged. I think, uh, and, and I, I think a big issue here is the amount of money. I don't think there's, I don't think there's public stomach for more money or even, as importantly, community time. I think we have to be, I mean, GBOS's job is really, is to be aware of both of those resources. And we can get lost on that sometimes because Trails is kind of doing their thing, but we're, we're also responsible for keeping an eye on a process which has gone on for... And, and I think that we have to take our responsibility as, as for time management. And again, we were specifically asked to help with that, because that's the issue. So I would like to see us say, um, this, this has already gone through a public process. Everybody, everybody involved with Trails has now had a chance to have their say. I mean, I think, haven't had your say. Mr. Chance. Because there's been plenty of opportunity. So I'd like to see us spend what money we have left getting this into the same kind of package format as the other plan, and then have them sit as equals. But I, I don't think we have the time, the money, or the resources for debatably public will to go through the whole process again. I hope people don't feel short-changed by that, but I feel like we've given democracy a really good shot at this point.
Thank you, Jennifer. I share similar concerns about the budget and especially time, not only of staff, which is huge. If you think about how many meetings that have been special this year. I know that Trails took two months off, but they usually do. So we've passed nine meetings so far this year, and the other committees have had over dozens of meetings. So I agree, I feel like the public process has been quite extensive, and the people that were really, uh, involved did a lot of the work, and they're losing energy and motivation to continue to show up at multiple special meetings where if the energy's losing momentum. So if we come up with a specific answer to the January 1st question, what does that include? We just need to decide whether we're going to edit four A and E on this or, um, wait. Say wait, but see how they vote on, in January? For the, the current plan as it is, which is the, we'll call it the candidate plan. Mike, was that the word you were using that I used here?
I've been trying to use the word candidate plan because the, for the red line as well. So that's what we were doing here.
Okay. So the red line's turning into, right now, with all the amendments that have been passing or failing at each meeting right now, uh, is the candidate draft. So they need to vote.
Yeah, there'd be basically the red line candidate and a new candidate.
Guy, go ahead.
I just have a question. So what would that look like? I mean, so we are gonna have, we are going to present two plans, the red line candidate. And it needs to be voted on in January. Is that the way I'm hearing this?
I, it's written sort of that way, but I think, I'm having a hard time seeing it that way.
Yeah.
Because the red line was already voted on.
Well, actually, what, what we actually said was, everything has to be turned in by January.
I think Mike wants to just clarify to...
Oh, sorry.
What?
Well, all I, all I was gonna say is, we have, so the way to think about this is, there was a plan that went through a full public process. We want the opinion of all the different committees and bodies that are relevant in Girdwood. One of them said no, and then didn't send it any, hasn't pushed it any further. But because GTC does not have a veto, it's not the final decision-making body here, we at GBOS should also have the opportunity to look at it. And if the two candidate plans which are presented to us, first of all, we don't know if the new candidate plan is going to be voted on or against by GTC. But assuming it is, then GTC have produced two plans, one they like, one they don't like. And then we have two plans, and we can make exactly the same decision or say no to both or say yes. Well, we can't say yes to both, that's the only thing we can't do. So there are lots of different possibilities there. But I think the, the thing to think about it is, I think the way to approach this is, GTC has basically said they didn't like the red line plan when it was finished. And therefore, it didn't go any further, but it still went through a full public process, and it has kind of public support, just not the GTC support on that day. So I'm not suggesting we pass it in, in, we go route, we, we ignore what GTC says. I said there is, but there is something that we have not had a chance to address compared to the new one.
Right. And because they're asking for assistance, we might have to use an alternative mechanism to help this get to the finish line. So, uh, Jennifer?
I might recommend four E. So do some kind of compilation of everything that they've worked so hard on in the last year. And as I said, try to get it in a format similar to the other plan. And the, it would be great if GTC could vote on it before January 31st and then present it to GBOS. So we have what they voted on, yes or no, um, and we've got the red line plan.
Okay. So you're saying go A, B, E?
I'm saying go five E.
Okay, straight to four E as their, the answer to clarify the question?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're thinking this revised plan plus the red line?
I'm thinking that if they can get this plan ready, so we have something to go on besides the red line plan, that would be pretty much nothing else we do have as a community that red line plan. But I think they're gonna have it ready, and I think they're, they're gonna be ready. So I think they're gonna have something that has to be voted on.
Yeah, I guess, I guess our involvement is just understanding that the plan's important, and eventually we should just have one, right? Right? And so, um, the, um, you know, I don't feel, I mean, that is like the final say on it. But, you know, obviously, GTC, I will then represent us with what final plan by this point. Whether that's the red line, which it will be, I don't know, given the center of the conversation I've heard in the last seven months, it'll be this candidate plan that they want to...
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments on this. And I think, so if we said for now that four E is our answer to the question, what does the deadline include? And they have, hopefully, one, if not two, meetings a month between now and, they have, you know, they'll have one regular meeting in January. Hopefully, they can get more amendments, uh, through more amendments. So they'll come up and vote up or down a plan that's the new plan. And then there, if we stay there with that notion, uh, number, the second question was, what does consideration of the community as a whole mean that approach? I suggested, but it's a suggestion, I said this could be determined after January. The Trails meetings are open to the public, and the community as a whole could be clarified further by us. The trails meetings are open to the public and the community as a whole could be clarified further by us or some other them. Because an extraordinary organized event would have to occur, like a vote here in this room, let's say, to have a community as a whole weigh in on a new candidate plan. That would be like the extreme measure to have what we call community at a whole. Because not everyone could come to the one time they vote on the one plan, even though there's been very at meetings where you can call in and listen or vote. And we know that the people that call in are not everybody in the community. So if everyone's okay with that suggestion, we could keep that answer or amend it. That's just a suggested answer so that we don't have to decide until January because this may not be relevant. Jennifer?
Okay, so I just, I should back up one second. I wanted to just revise E for one thing.
Yes.
Just for point of clarification, so this doesn't come back to us. I would like to say, and said plan is voted on by GTC before January 31st.
Okay.
Just so there's no question about GBOS or anyone. Just voted on by GTC, which is probably the way I think I'd say, but it's okay.
I know, that's a good clarification.
And then if I understand what you're saying is this second question, I understand this is a GBOS question, not a GTC question.
Okay, they asked us this one.
Yes, but I think I agree with your answer, which is saying, if I'm understanding correctly, you don't have to decide right now.
Okay, and Mike has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Two, just in case that helps.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, I'll go back. I still have something about question one, but I'll address question two first. So yeah, I think the, I agree with what Jen said too, and I think what you're saying as well, Brianna. So question two is basically they're asking what GBOS is going to do with this information. And we as a board will make that decision, I imagine, when we actually have the two things in front of us. I mean, if they don't, you know, there's one answer if GTC, you know, the trails committee never comes up with a second plan or don't agree on it. But there's a different answer if they do. So it really depends on the conditions when we have them, you know, at the, after January 31st is what we will do. And we can't quite, we can't guarantee that we won't make it. You know, we can't guarantee what that decision will be when we have that information. But I think the expectation is that, you know, the community has to put forward one plan. And we will go through the details of exactly how we do that when we are faced with the reality. I did want to go back to question one because I do not disagree with what's being said. And I definitely agree that we do not want to put a lot more public process into this and a lot more time and money. I completely agree with that. The one, the one small thing that I would point out that the the process of amending a plan section by section never addresses is and staff, the public comment process and the staff revision process does do is answer the question of is this plan coherent? So what we had last time was when there were contradictory suggestions, rather than say yes or no to each one individually throughout the process, at the end, they were all pulled together and a set of consistent and coherent revisions were suggested for the plan as a whole. And that isn't quite how it happens when you're going through a list of forty odd amendments and saying yes or no on each individual one. So there is something to be gained by the, the sort of a final review of the thing holistically, which GTC does not probably intend to do if they're going through, you know, in the current process. But I agree, we don't want to spend a lot of money and time on that. So if they can, sorry, I'm going to say one last word. If we could say, specify somehow an abbreviated public comment process and revisions, then it should absolutely be nothing like the scale of the last one. Now I'm done. I'm finished. Sorry.
Just writing it down. Thank you, Mike. And Jennifer?
So Mike, that's a good point, and I forgot to mention, I had a conversation with Kyle about this. My understanding is that there is a small amount of budget left. And my suggestion is going to be to have staff do exactly what you're talking about with remaining budget. We don't have enough budget for full public process. But I think if I understood my conversation from Kyle currently, we do have the money to help have have some assistance in getting that coherent. And I should have mentioned that earlier, that that could still be part of the process. And then, and then the advantage to that is that we don't have to then seek out more funding. We can use, hopefully, use our remaining funding, funding to the best possible benefit.
Okay, thank you. So to, go ahead.
Just, does staff want to do that? I mean, this can be pretty, there's lots of opinions in this and with staff's input is that something that is in your job description? I think, would you, would you want to, I guess?
Well, we've done it once.
Right.
So I guess I need clarity to understand. And I'll just quickly describe what I feel my marching orders are at this point in time. Is one, right now is to finish the amended changes, so getting, helping GTC get through that process. And then once we finish that process, working with Holly to incorporate what's been approved from those amendments. And then currently, the way things stand, I understood is that we're going to go out again for a public review of a set in their period of time here, thirty or forty five days, and ask for public comment. Those comments would come back like in the red line, original plan. And then we would process those comments and then come up with recommendations for once again, GTC to vote on and then come up with a final draft plan. So, and then that would be voted on, and then we would come to GBOS with both the newly, I would say, version two of the red line and version one of the red line, and then GBOS would make a decision. Is that, is that what is being still asked by GBOS?
Do we need two versions of the red line? I mean, if, I think that was kind of the final straw or whatever, if nothing can be agreed on. I mean, shouldn't GTC come to us with a final version of the plan?
I think.
I like that process. I don't know if you're going to get it done by January, but.
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess the details are in the process as to what the expectation of staff is, is to handle putting that out for public comment and then processing all those comments again, categorizing them and then kicking out recommendations. I definitely need Holly to help me with that. I mean, otherwise, it's just, it's just on us. You know, we have to eke it in with all everything else we're doing. So, so, and you know, that was, that took us almost forty five days to get through those comments last time. We had, we had two hundred, two thousand unique comments on that last round. I don't think we'll have it on this round. But we'll probably still have substantial comments that we'll have to deal with. So, so I can see that taking at least thirty days for us to, you know, we got thirty days to receive comments. And then at least thirty days, once the comment period closes, to process those comments and then set our recommendations and then work with GTC. They go through those comments is probably another thirty five days because you have to introduce the comments and then have them vote on each one of those comments. And we know how long that process has taken.
It's taken a year.
It's taken a year. It took us, it took us, I think, good five months to go through the last comments, I believe, maybe four months before that, that version red line got voted down. So so I guess the question is, is if that's the case, then I do have about, I think I have about fifty five hundred left in our budget, which was set for having Holly get us through the approval process, always the assembly. And when the plan got voted down, I said, Holly, you go away, let us get through this, this portion and I'll bring you back and then I'll engage you. But if I do have to have her go through and help me organize all the comments that we receive, that's it's going to eat up budget real quick. So probably need more.
I think the oversight, though, is super important for addition. Having another set of eyes on it. I mean, I think that just, you need that, you know, if that's the way. But counting forward, backward, whatever. So would we make this, if it doesn't go out to thirty or forty five day public comment, how, what, what advance is that before? Can we announce that tomorrow? Or GTC meets next Monday? You know, we don't, that plan's not even finished yet, right?
No, we still have sixteen amendments to go through.
Yeah, and then it's thirty day. I assume there's a period before you can announce your public comment.
Yeah, probably, I mean, we probably can't announce the public comment till we know we're going to be close to done with these sixteen amendments.
Right, because people need that. So the January thirty first.
Mike, our, Mike has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, as we've got it written down here on the board in four A through B, that is exactly what Kyle described. What we can do, though, is acknowledge that the substantial part of what the revised plan is, is actually was in the old plan. Some parts have changed, but most of it has not. And any comments which were, which basically duplicative of the last round of public comment, we can act, we can do exactly the same things we did then. So we wouldn't be making changes which were not accepted as part of the previous round of public comment typically. So I agree, we, I would expect fewer comments. And they should really only be focused on the things that have changed between the red line and the final plan. So for that reason, that's why I'm suggesting we could potentially have an abbreviated process of public comment rather than the full forty five days, whatever we had last time. Now, I do accept that that may not work. And because we have a very passionate group of people, we may still generate two thousand comments, even though a lot less of the plan has been changed. And that is a problem because I, I'm with Jen here. I don't think that we have, I don't think going through the, the process you described, I think that's going to be a lot of time. It's probably going to eat up more of the budget than we had, than we have left. And I don't think that full process is going to give us that much value for the cost and time it's going to take. If there's a way of just, of just offering basically the differences and saying you can comment on the differences or highlighting the differences and say, we'll take comments on these changes because the rest has already gone through the process. And that may be a way of speeding it up and reducing the workload. That's what I meant when I said earlier, an abbreviated public review process. If that is not practical, if that, sorry, if that is not practical, then I think, you know, I'd appreciate that feedback. And then we can dispose of that idea very quickly.
Sure. So I, just for clarification, so like, for example, let's say we highlight this next round of changes in purple. And we give instruction to say, you can only comment on items listed in purple. And that, that, that definitely would abbreviate it, you know, in that aspect. So I can understand that if that's the route that you want to go, that's understandable. So yeah, either way, I think I'm still need Holly's time to make.
Yes, yes, agreed, agreed. But that may be feasible within the budget we have available, if it's, if it's just the changes we're reviewing.
Thank you, Mike. I was just going to say at some point after Kyle's description, thank you for delineating that, is that there just has to be a shortened way, so abbreviated way of doing the two steps that are your time and then the comments time. So the purple, I like this example about purple and the changes is really great because I said too, I think anyone that will take the effort to comment at this point is going to be stuff you've already read and already read because things that people maybe are just hung on to and they're not willing to let go ideas. So duplicative and unuseful time of staff to organize and repeat, maybe the most contentious issues in the plan. So if those are, we know doubt, and I also said, we know it in here because this process has been so thorough that by now there should be very few comments that are new or unique. So having Holly and Kyle, but mostly that, that Holly's time in there, I feel is important. I, so maybe just if you had a window of thirty, let's say fifteen, because most people wait till the last time anyway. But then staff will need a longer time to go through that. Guy?
So January thirty first is how did we come, how did we come up with this date? And not that I want to delay this any further, but I don't think we're going to get, unless those go like the last meeting and all those were three, three, two.
That's just for this, that where they are now. They need to get through four A slash A and a half by thirty first. Then we'll know if. When they have, I think until then to get through all these amendments and vote on it, you still need to vote on.
But that's going to involve this process too, right? I mean, is that what we're saying? That it isn't just, it's going to have to, if we're talking, if we want to do this process, then what is the January thirty first? How important is that? I hate to push things off and that, but you know, I mean, if that's the way public wants to see it done, then we're not going to, I doubt it, I would be shocked if it was all done. And to speed things up, we could push it off another month or two to arrive.
The January thirty first came up because you held a meeting in August, and so that was a six month period for them to wrap it up and, and get it to you. And then the way we, from staff perspective, the way we understood it was by the thirty first, we would have a plan that's been through public review, counted on, we've made the amendment changes. And, and you are being delivered both, let's say, purple version and the red version. And then a decision is decided what to take from there and how that's done.
Oh, Jennifer?
There, there was a little more to the January thirty first deadline. That was also a full year after red line.
Yep.
So it wasn't just six months from our meeting, it was a full year. And so we're like, you know what, we've got a few of a year to talk about amendments. It's time to be done. That was part of it. The, the other thing is that the, I would like to say that that process that Kyle outlined like that is what we did before and Steph has discussed this. But as I said before, I think we can shortchange it a lot. I think I think this, this plan comes on a foundation of the public process that happened, which the other plan did not. But this plan has a foundation in already heavily bed. And so I don't see us needing like the forty five day this and then, you know, yada, yada. I think, I think we can, I still would say, I think it's skip to E. And say, all right, GTC, bring us what you got in the best possible format. We'll look at our, at the two plans and figure out, and as Mike said, it's hard to figure out our plans forward until we know exactly what we're presented with. So I understand if that doesn't make everybody happy, not having a definitive answer to the second question. But it depends very much on whether or not we have two plans and how different they are. And everything else, I think we can take a look at what the public process will be from there. But I, all, I would hope, all GTC needs to worry about is bring us something that looks like red line as much as you can. I mean, sorry, not in details, but in format. Bring us something, can we come up with something as, as polished and put together and coherent as possible to go up against red line? And then let's take it from there as a figure out, like if they're super different, fine. If they're not super different, maybe we just figure out ways of combining them. I mean, there's all kinds of options forward. I think if we decide ahead of time how we're going to confront those, then does it, it's, it's kind of weirdly putting the curve.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think that also too many of the last part you said, giving too much direction there would affect how people are doing their voting process at each amendment. If they know that, oh, they'll have another chance to write more comments or something. Guy?
Does that mean S five? So I mean, if it's, doesn't mean S five, then doesn't mean loading it up with a bunch of people and then there might be issues with who's been to GTC or the only ones and they can vote and all that.
Right. I think Mike had something right before you asked that too.
Sorry, yeah. So responding to Jen's comments, so Jen's basically, as I understand it, four A through E is the process that Kyle described. And the suggestion from Jen is we basically jump to A. I, my principle, if I was back to purely on principle, I would say we have to go through A through E. However, I also think that we can, what Kyle described was the full process. So I would like to understand or get Kyle's judgment. If we were to take an abbreviated process where we only looked at the differences, so you know, we look at the bit that's purple, this is going to become the purple line plan, we know that. So if we only look at the bits in purple and say, you can comment on these, we expect far fewer comments. They're obviously going to involve less of the document. So we have an abbreviated process in terms of public comment time. We have an abbreviated process in terms of compiling those interset of changes. Realistically, if we went through steps A to A to D, well, sorry, A to E, but it was the, using that abbreviated process, instead of five But it was the, using that abbreviated process instead of five months, do you think that could be done in sixty days, in thirty days, or would it still be four or five months, Kyle? I know it's hard to make a definitive answer. I'm just trying to get a sense of would we really be cutting it down dramatically or would it still be similar length?
Question. Um, I think the hardest thing I think of the whole process is when you have to take the amendments back to GTC for their consideration. And it's really at the will of the staff as to what amendments they want to propose to the group. So it puts a lot of pressure on myself and Holly to say, okay, here's what we think should be amended in there. Hey, honestly, you know, you, you want to try to do something that's efficient and effective. Um, so we don't spend a lot of time in GTC if we know we have this deadline lingering there. And so, uh, you know, one thought I did have, and I, and I, I shared this and, and maybe confused, maybe discussing this already, but is that we go through, after we get done with the current amendments we are, we go through and get those amendments incorporated, those approved amendments. And then we put out for thirty day comment or review is for people to review that plan. And then somehow we figure out a way for the community to vote if they want that plan or the red line or back to the version one. And then there's a choice that's completed between them without any more amendments or any more comments associated with the, with the version that comes out. And, and at that point, the community makes a decision, yeah, we want this one or this one, and, and, and we move forward the review process from there. You know, in that aspect, I have no idea what the comments will be like if we just focus on the purple uh, version and, and what we got there and how we flush that out. It, it, I just worry about it getting tied up in committee again, and they, they take forever to get through that process and, you know, we're another six months in.
The step, step E last time, uh, every single comment that came from staff was accepted, I think, except for one. I don't remember which it was. I think there was one which, the mountain black one. Apart from that, they were all accepted. So if the concern is step E, then I think there's a high, there's a fairly high degree of trust that they could be, you know, you could, you could effectively take that as a block and say, either they're, they're all accepted automatically if staff recommends and they, they, they'll go into the final version, final candidate. Or, or the process is much more efficient and rather than going through them one at a time. Um, it's more like a consent agenda item where they're, they're voted on as a block and only if, you know, a significant number of people want to bring it out, a specific thing out for con, for consideration to get brought out from the, from the block of changes. So there are ways to make that more efficient if GTC wanted to do that. But I, I, I'm still kind of back to my question. I mean, it would be, so let's be very concrete about this. Let's say, the end of January is when we're saying we want GTC to vote on a final plan. If we extend it by a week, so their first meeting, and if they vote and make that vote in the first week of February, their February meeting, when could we basically, when could we realistically start A so they would have all of the comments back and a compiled set of changes available to them at the, you know, the February meeting for them to basically go through, say yes, no, and then do a final vote, yes, up or down on the whole plan.
Thanksgiving.
Okay, so the end of, the end of December, uh, sorry, the end of November.
In November, by mid-November, we would need to, I would say, we, we would need to put it out to public comment by Thanksgiving and, and give till the beginning of January and then yeah, actually, I would probably say, just trying to think how that process is going to work because the consent agenda, uh, item is good. Just as long as they don't yank every amendment out and say, I want to review every amendment, you know, whereas I guess, you know, the assembly has that power as an individual uh, representative to do that. It'd be interesting to figure out how we format that out, but just thinking backwards. So we do a thirty day comment and we're looking to vote on it by February second, let's say. And so and we have to get through the amendments that they have. I would say we wouldn't have the amendments to them by the first of January. Um, and then hopefully if we had to do any special meetings, we push it through January. So we have the comments and so we have to process the comments. They would take us a good thirty days. So I would say we would have that done by the, we started on that by the first of December. And if we give a thirty day comment period, that means we would have to start that November first. So at the end of October.
So actually, what that would give is GTC their October meeting, if necessary, on other meeting in October and then November meeting. And then you could have, they would be at the point where they've finished the, hopefully they would be finished with a set of amendments they have in front of them and have a candidate which could go out for review.
Yeah, so I would just.
Is that feasible?
It, it's feasible. I'd have to talk with Holly to make sure her schedule is open to take the approved amendments, incorporate those, turn around and then do the public process to advertise and get out like, hey, we started the comment period. It'd be nice to kick off the comment period with a regular meeting and then advertise it, open it up and then close it with the next regular meeting and then give us time to process everything, come up with our recommendations, which I think thirty days is aggressive and, and then put it out. So, so we've, we opened the comment period by November for, by the November meeting, close it by the December meeting, process in December and then bring amendments by January. Excuse me. That's right. I'm just trying to think, this is a lot going on. Uh, we, we finished the amendments, let's start where we are right now. We finished the amendments by the November meeting. We take those amendments and we incorporate them into the plan. The plan becomes, we get a purple version. You know, maybe get that done in two weeks. And then by mid-November, we could open up a comment period. Give ourselves thirty days, that gives us by mid-December to receive those comments. We try to process those comments in the two weeks leading up to it, which is Christmas, up to a January meeting and then present that to start the amendment process with GTC. Think it's a bit of a pipe dream to have it ready by February first.
Yeah. Yeah, but the, 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 definitely by the beginning of January, it would be potentially mid-January could be feasible. Um, but that would give them the, a January meeting, say a mid-January meeting, just to deal with holidays and to make the process potentially work. We'll give them a mid-January meeting to just confirm the staff changes. And then the February meeting would basically be just an up or down vote on the plan. So effectively have two meetings to do that.
Unless they yank out and want to talk about some of the amendments, right?
Well, but that, that would be, the January meeting would be that discussion.
Yes.
I mean, they, they could do an up or down vote on all of them in the first five minutes. Um, I assume there would be some discussion. So they have a few, they have a meeting to go through that, discuss them and hopefully do an up or down vote on, on them all during the January meeting. And then the February meeting would be an, an up or down thick vote on the whole thing, or potentially that discussion from the January meeting goes into the beginning of the February meeting and then the end of the February meeting. Um, you know, they have the whole two hours to do an up or down vote by the end of it. So it gives them two full meetings to go through the process of accepting the staff recommendations. Um, and then voting up or down on the whole thing. I think it's, it would be tough, but it sounds like that might be feasible, whether we want to do that or not. I think it's a separate question.
I, and I, I think one thing that GBS should consider and have a discussion at, at some point, is set a deadline for it is when we need to talk about, either we're going to make that deadline or we're going to make the exception or extending that deadline. Because right now, like we would have to go through eight amendments, eight amendments, a meeting if we do the regular meeting and a special meeting um, next month. And I don't even know if we have a special meeting scheduled yet because our GTC chair is on the road. And will be gone uh, through all of October. So we need the other officers uh, to step in and, and we know at least one has a conflict of interest there. Uh, because it's her amendments that we're going through. Uh, so we would need the two remaining officers to run the meeting and also support us calling a special meeting.
Right. But they, so they have two full meetings anyway, and then the special meeting would be a third meeting in order to get through the amendments. Because you have all of, all of October and all of November's meeting plus potentially a special meeting. So that'd be, yeah, okay. Again, I'm, I'm not, I haven't been to the last few trails meeting, so I don't know if this is feasible. I'm just doing the exercise of thinking through this. Are we even asking a question that could, is practical? If it's not practical, we can just throw it away and I would probably support what Jen's suggestions.
Yeah, I think it'd be really hard to make it practical.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I think we're definitely coming to that conclusion.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Margaret had her hand up real quick.
Well, I wanted to mention that another challenge in this is using the parliamentarian. And she has some dates that don't work for her and those become, I think, more as we get closer to the election in the spring. I also think that, you know, there's, there's a group there that knows that if there isn't progress, that the red line still sits there and they may be motivated to slow things down in order to leave the red line as the only option. And I don't think that that behavior should, I mean, I'm a parent, so I guess that I look at this as whether you reward behavior that isn't necessarily great. Um, but what I've seen in the changes to the red line is that a lot of amendments were made, but not a lot have been passed. So, you know, fundamentally, there's really one or two questions that come up. So, anyway, I think that it gets a little bit dicey when the Trails Committee has already said they don't want the red line plan. Then why would the red line plan continue to be in play?
Right, but only.
On them to come up with their decision on what they do support, instead of continuing to offer what they don't support.
I think there would be a counter argument for, um, you know, we have, we have two children here potentially and the counter argument would be that the, uh, that there was a plan which the community basically agreed with, um, at the, when the red light plan was voted on and it was voted down in order to make some specific changes. Um, even though it was a, you know, the community obviously was com, fit relatively comfortable as a whole, um, based on the comment feedback, uh, with the plan as it stood. So one can argue the last year has been sort of, you know, giving special consideration to, uh, to a, a certain opinion within the community. I think both arguments are, you know, you have to kind of split both babies, I suppose, here at some level.
No, I choose my favorite baby.
That's why I had two kids.
Yeah, it's a test that you guys are in, for sure.
Yeah, that's why this is a really, or it's getting deep discussion. It's taking us a long time because it's not as simple at all to discuss this. And the points you made, Margaret, are very clear and the inability to edit through that first process is what created the amendments. So people that weren't quite satisfied with that red line wanted to make it better with all these amendments that are going through right now and taking this long process. Mike, did you have something that I interrupted?
Um, I, I was just going to say, I want to jump to something very concrete then. So, um, I think I'm convinced by us sort of going through in excruciating detail what the timeline would be. I'm convinced that that going through these steps for A to four D is not really practical, even if we abbreviate it. So I think I'm going to suggest, I'm not sure I'm going to vote, but I'm going to suggest that we, um, we basically just go straight to four E. So as soon as GTC is finished with, um, their set of amendments, that's turned into a draft and then it comes in front of GBOS and we make a decision what to do then. So we would have two things in front of us. We would have the, the new version, which has been drafted, one staff edit for consistency, but no full public review. But it's based on a document which went through public review. So we'd have that in front of us and we'd have the red line plan in front of us. And then we as GBOS decide how to take it from there. That's why I'm going to propose as a motion.
Okay, so. That was, that's the motion on the table, on the floor. Yes, Jennifer? Second motion, any discussion on that then? Guy, real quick, or Guy first and then.
Do you want to go first? I don't know. So the, um, your motion is that they come back, they're going to present us with these two, but we still have these other questions about how to address that, right?
Yes.
Those are going to be the questions. So I, I would like to know how we're going to address those as a community as a whole or as a board, as opposed to, um, I, I just think I, I need to know that, you know.
So I think the question in front of us is how do we get to something that, how do we get to a second candidate that reflects the work GTC has done through twenty twenty two? And how do we get to a point where that has some kind of parity with the previous version? And it would, it stands kind of on its own. And I'm more, given the time scale we have and how much work it would be um, to go through the same full process we had last time, and given that much of the document has, is exactly the same and hasn't changed. Um, I'm convinced that what we should, rather than go through that full process, which is what I originally thought we should do and what may, I'm still in principle think we should do. Practically, we can't do that. So I think the better path is just for GTC to deal with their remaining amendments, get to a point where they're voted up or down on all of those. There's at least one pass by staff for consistency and coherence. So, you know, they go through the plan and if there are things which are inconsistent in the plan, there's a proposed revision. So the final thing is, I would expect very few changes there. It's just simply for consistency. So it's a coherent plan. Um, and then GTCC that and hopefully say yes, and then basically say, throw it in our lap and say, you have to deal, yours to deal with now. We, that by doing, by agreeing on that path, we have told GTC what the next, you know, what they have to do over the next few months, which is what they originally asked us to do. We do not have to decide, um, what, we do not have to decide yet exactly what we do after that. I think that we will get feedback from the community between now and then about what they want us to do. And we will have an actual document in front of us. And if it really is, what we end up with is two documents where there's only five pages that are different. Then I think that's a very different discussion from if the differences are more substantial. And what I'm hearing from, you know, what I'm hearing here is that really a lot of the changes that have been proposed haven't been accepted. So at the end of the day, what we're probably going to get is a relatively small set of differences. And we can come up with a, um, process, given what's in front of us, that will address that. But we don't have to decide that right now. And I think it would be a mistake to decide it right now, given that we don't know what the conditions on the ground will be.
And then for Kyle, um, when Mike made his motion, I understood that staff, meaning Polly, would be involved in that process where it's abbreviated, but it's the time that you need to get through that, um, shorter.
What, yeah. Just to clarify that, I'm not talking about public, there's no public comments coming in here. It's just they produce the document and there's just a review by staff saying, is this consistent, coherent, yes or no? And if it's not, these three changes will fix it. So it'd be, it would be a much simpler process and there's no public comment period. There's no two or three on deciding which comments. You're the ones who are commenting effectively from a, from a consistency point of view.
Okay, so I understand that. So we would incorporate the approved amendments and then, uh, do a, a, a review through the plan to make sure it's consistent and then just point out anything that we felt we had to change uh, for consistency. And then just ask, uh, GTC to, uh, approve those, uh, consistency changes, basically.
Yes, yes.
Be anything of substance. It'd be more of just making sure the plan reads consistent.
Yes.
Edit. Uh, Margaret?
Oh, I'm, yep. I think that it would be a good idea to move the date to the first meeting in February, just to be consistent with when their meetings are held and that will hopefully take some of the stress out of trying to figure out special meetings and things like that.
It actually seems to be feasible. They could be done with these sixteen amendments before then. Um, I think we should say no later than the first meeting of February.
Yeah. You could amend that or just agree right now in that way that it's not a date, it's the first meeting in February. Some, something happens and.
Well, no, no late, no later then. I don't think we want to disincentivize them to finish it earlier.
Yeah, Guy?
So just before I vote, um, so we'll probably present this to the Trails Committee next week, right? And so we'll present, we're just going to go to E, you're going to get your thing together and then we're, we'll just present that we don't know what consideration is, what we're going to do with it. That's what, that's what we're going to tell them that. You give us this plan and there's going to be a red line out there, but we don't know what we're going to do with it when we get there. This, that's correct, right? And we may not need to decide now, but I, I mean, those are pretty good questions. I'm just curious if it's going to.
Could I respond? Could I respond? From my position, I would not characterize it as we don't know what we're gonna do with it. What, how I would characterize it is when we're actually, when we have the thing in front of us, we can address how the plans are different. And, you know, if they're only slightly different, it's a different process to if they're very different. If they have fundamental differences, then there'd be one approach. But if they end up basically, you know, this, we add one trail here and we take one trail out there. And there are these small, you know, relatively small differences, then there's a, there's some other solutions. So I think it depends what's actually presented to us as to what we would do with it. And I don't think there's any value in prejudging, you know, the twelve different possibilities now. I think it makes more sense that basically they're, they're, they're gonna vote up or down on these two things. We will take their votes and the, and the plans that came with it and, and sort of work from, work from that point. And we're obviously, you know, we should be respecting the vote they had, but without necessarily openly obeying the vote we have. We should have a reason why we do what we do. We should be able to articulate that.
Thank you. Yes, Jennifer?
I just, I actually mostly wanted to agree with what Mike said, but also say that this, I, I thought that that was a really useful exercise to walk through the whole potential schedule because.
Yes.
Because my brain also went to. First of all, that would eat up all of the budget that we got left and possibly more. And as Kyle, I believe, as Steph is saying, some of this budget is was supposed to be forgiven to be a separate. So if we burn through all that, then we've got, again, a budget problem. There's also the, the time problem and the incredible amount of hours that that involves. So that's increasing. Again, on top of expenditure, on top of expenditure. But lastly, what's been made clear to me by the community members is that there's an expense in being able to apply for grants and everything else. The longer this goes on.
Yeah.
The more people are unable to build trails and move on with what they wanna see happen. So that's another aspect of what we're trying to keep an eye on for the sake of the whole community is that part of the consideration as well.
Yeah. And I mean, this does have the poss, this does have the possibility if they could be done with by December. I mean, it's, it's quite feasible. They could get through the remaining amendments in the October, November, December meeting, and it would be basically on our. You know, it would be on our desk, if you like, at the beginning of January, or even potentially at the end of, in our last meeting in December. So there is a feasibility for doing it even faster by this, by the shortcut.
Right. Thank you, Mike. I hope we can communicate that to Trails next week, that it's could be done sooner. You could get through more than eight per meeting. And if our mission is to have more trails in Gerwood or more maintained trails in Gerwood and have proper funding be granted, we'd need to help the process along instead of slowing it down. And everything right now is just too slow for helping the goals of Gerwood and the future of Gerwood. So. Thank you all for this discussion and Kyle and Margaret for helping sell it out. And I, if there are no other comments, I think we should vote. So we can go on to the next item and new business. What?
Lots of new business.
Neither comments. Okay. Did you vote? All vote?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Number three, review GTSA nonprofit recreation grants and funding requests.
Yeah, if you look in the packet, I'll just go ahead and introduce these to you. We have no surprises among our grantee, our grant requesters. We have Little Bears requesting ten thousand. Challenge Alaska requesting ten thousand. Glacier Valley Transit sixty-five hundred. Gerwood Art Institute coming in at sixty-nine seventy-five. The Community Club at eight thousand. So that comes to forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. And currently you have thirty-five thousand budgeted. So there'll be some discussions about that. Our valley is hard funded at the twenty-five thousand. So where this goes from here is that at the meeting next week, you'll have the grantees come and do their presentations. And at that time, you'll have the grant applications and evaluation forms presented. I'll probably do that digitally if that works out for you. You can share them as probably Word documents will work the best so that people can get into them. Or I can print them for you if you need hard copies. And then at the next GBOS meeting, you would be evaluating and voting on them. And then we would be scaling the votes. So you would spend your thirty-five thousand dollars however you want. And don't go over or else it really messes up the plan. And then we would get your values for each of the requests and average them and scale them so that we get to thirty-five thousand total. So I don't think there's anybody new to this system this year. And we don't have any new grants to really talk about. And I don't think anybody has any super something new to present. So it should kind of feel like everybody knows where we are. Sound good?
This was open to the public.
All of it's open to the public.
Next Thursday, is it?
Uh, the fifth is your grants presentation meeting. Right?
And maybe it doesn't matter, but we for sure have one absent that day.
For the fifth?
For our quorum.
I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter for the grants presentation meeting. She can catch up with the video as well. But I think that she'll be back for the October nineteenth or October seventeenth.
I'm likely, if it's the, I, I called up to Barrow, I'll probably be in Barrow and not in the Jan on that Wednesday. So, but I totally get it. I have a package and so many things with the process of eight, as they're able to present it in.
Thanks for letting us know, Mike.
Yeah. Again, I think it's a work session. As far as I understand it anyway, there won't be any voting that's taking place. And as long as we have a quorum otherwise. If we had a lot of things that were different this year, I think that we would maybe need to change.
If they have any presentation materials, we'll ask them to try to supply those in advance so we can share with those online.
That'd be great. Anything else for that thing, Margaret, for putting those numbers together for us? For to next week, number four for new business, traffic calming measures, Timberline Drive and Mount Hood.
Yes, so I'll speak to this and we'll probably have some residents at the next meeting since it'll be old business there. But we've received definitely, as always, we've received complaints for speeding, especially along Timberline and Mount Hood. As the most recent one was Mount Hood, the resident on that street and people going to the airport for commercial recreational purposes, coming through the neighborhood fairly fast. Woodya Police has responded and set up, you know, speed enforcement. And it's always when the, when your police are there, everybody goes to speed limit. But as soon as they leave, people tend to go pretty fast. And surprisingly, it is people from out of town and, and not surprisingly, it's also people who live here that we get complaints about. And it's sort of an issue there. So we've been working with with the residents and we've reached out to the traffic department. From my department, I'm limited to what kind of signage I can put out there. It's always temporary, considered associated with construction. Anything of enforcement like a portable radar or speed bumps or anything like that has to go through the traffic department. And what limits us here is the fact that we're on gravel roads, so we can't install speed bumps because there's a huge liability risk with that. Putting out seasonal speed bumps out there. Yeah, you know, they could break loose and slam up into cars and cause damage. So we're looking at different methods that we can do to help with the traffic calming. And so we're gonna go through the steps that traffic department lays out and I'll share those real quick here so you can just see it. And the first step is to meet with your community council about it. And so get to it. There it goes. This might be a little bit small for those online and here in the room. How to make it bigger at this point. But the first step is to is for the traffic department to receive requests. And that request has been sent to the traffic department through myself and a representative soul. As the resident contacted both of us. And then the next one is to come to community council to gain support for traffic calming requests on Mount Hood. And then at this point, I'm including Timberline because we hear about there as, as much as that. Community council supports the request and then sends a resolution of support to traffic. And then the traffic department will do a speed and volume data collection on those streets. So they'll put out those little scripts that count cars or click count cars that go by and they can get the data and volume of the speed coming through that area. And then the traffic department will review the data and determine if the request meets the criteria of section one of their man, of this manual. Which basically says, yeah, we got a problem here and we can make improvements. They, then they will consider traffic calming for the, again, in three years if it didn't make the significant change or occur. So it is a bit of a owner's process, but this is the way the traffic department works. And they always wanna have data to support their changes and the cost that they're gonna request from area wide budget to install any sort of traffic calming out there. One thing that we are working on with DOT is DOT, we still have some funding that we can use for getting the portable radar signs. And so I've been working with Scott Thomas on getting some portable radar signs installed or purchasing them. And they'll be on trailers and we can move them around on Aliaska Highway and possibly getting two that you see going into the construction right now. If they were doing the rockwork, they have portable radar signs. And so they're very supportive of that. And so we're going through the steps of getting that determined. And then I probably have to put out purchasing requests for those. But in this case, this is sort of what we're going through here. You'll probably hear from the residents the next meeting about this request. And if they can get, we'll draft up a resolution of support for you guys to consider and move that forward. So we're just trying our best. I think our biggest limitation is the fact that we have gravel roads. And speed calming bumps aren't an option, which is a huge thing in many neighborhoods. That's where we stand at this point.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike, go ahead.
What are, what are the options that the traffic department would support for first, for traffic control, speed, traffic calming on gravel roads?
Well, we would hope that they would maybe let us, if we get those radar signs, they would let us use them on the gravel roads. And then also possibly mounting any sort of radar signs up on the coast. You see out there, they do have battery operated ones where you can put in large batteries in them and they'll last for so long. And then you just replace them when the batteries go, go dead. So that would be an option there. You know, have them maybe dig into their manual and see if there's anything we can put out there for portable signs that, you know, especially like the traffic going to Virgin Creek Falls. How can we better advertise that? And more flags on the speed limit signs, something just to help do something out there. So we, we like them to take a hard look at it and see what they can come up with and, and, and figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And the last P SAC meeting or two meetings ago, when the flashing sign was recommended for the speed. It's always something different. So I feel like it helps me as a driver to see them when, if they're rented or if they can be moved for temporary spots. So at this location would be, well, two locations, probably be helpful.
Yeah.
I don't know if the results would be shown unless they're also parked there.
Correct. That's the hardest part is when nobody's around, everybody feels the will to do what they wanna do.
Right.
Something's there of enforcement. They, I don't know. Sometimes we also see the opposite effect with those portable signs, you know. People go as fast as they can to see how high they can get that sign to go up, you know. And so there's always, there's, there's always a counter to everything you do to, for a positive. So it's just, it's just part of it, you know. For example, the crosswalk signs. We put those crosswalk signs out there and we had somebody for two months, almost every other night, throw them in the ditch. And we're pulling them out of the ditch, you know. And it's just a safety enhancement, but somebody had a thing of beef with them. So you know, it's just whatever you do, there's always somebody who's gonna be negative about it.
Thank you. Number five. Review public safety contract.
There, let me look it up this screen.
A chance to do that last week?
Yeah. So the packet that I printed just has the revision pages instead of the full contract. So it won't read real well if we try to make it make sense.
So we've gotten to a point now where we have come up with in the early stages, basically between staff from each area, the police chief and myself. We've come up with revisions for the two thousand twenty-three contract. And this would be a five-year contract with Woodya Police. And with the major difference, I would say between in this contract would be the first three years would be set at a flat rate. And then the last two years would be at an eight percent increase. And, and so I'll just quickly go through it. A lot of this stuff is pretty editing. It's and as you can see here, it'd be a three-year contract with one, two-year option on, upon mutual consent. And we would know how much that option would cost. Right now, we have a three-year contract with two one-year options. But we don't know how much year four and five would cost. That'd be a negotiation that would happen. Whereas in this one, we would know exactly, if we wanted to extend another two years with them, we know exactly what that's gonna cost. And so there wouldn't be much heartburn to get to that if we decided to go that route. But if we ever wanted to do something different, it gives us an out in three years for both parties to do that. So it just sort of cleans up what's going there. I'll quickly get through it here and Margaret did. You can see most of this stuff is edit changes. One thing that is major is that the consumer price index, which helps us now to figure out our annual adjustments, which would be the annual increase, would go out of the contract. So we wouldn't have to go through that. It's actually kind of a cumbersome process because we have to do this first half or the second half of last year and the first half of this year or the current year. And then we try to come up with a number. And so from their accounting, they rather just do an increase, which would be the twelve percent increase for the next three years. So we go from seven oh eight to seven ninety-three. And it'd be seven ninety-three for the next three years. And then we decide to go for the next two years. That'd be eight percent increase. So we go from seven ninety-three to eight fifty-six for the yearly contract, that aspect. So CPI would be taken out. And I think that's, that is really where it comes down to. A lot of the services, the other things in here that have been agreed to, and we've been in relation, relationship with them for the last six years on, would stay the same within the contract. Some of this stuff is boilerplate. And they, some of the changes are like changing the city manager's name there. And so just sort of looking through this. And we kind of get into, so appendix A is what really is sort of what they're gonna do for us. That stuff stays the same. Currently, the way we have it listed right now, the minimum that they can, they have to provide is three full, three physical patrols a day. No less than forty-five minutes. And then they, they respond to every service call. So they get a service call from the resident, they respond to that. And, you know, they determine what the action is to, you know, according to what the service call is, but they respond to this. Now, to be honest, they come over here and they do quite a bit more time than forty-five minutes a day. When they're here for patrol, you know, they usually get wrapped up in other things. So they might be in the valley. You know, at a minimum of six hours a day, if not more, just depending on service calls and things like that. But the physical patrols are them just driving around, looking for something while responding to any service call on top of that, that they do, that aspect. You know, one thing I did discuss with them was trying to station an officer here at night on a full time. And the one thing that they the reason they didn't support that was that the comfortability of officers. You know, officers work a seven-day shift. And so they're on basically twenty-four hours for that seven days. And then they have seven days off the next week. And so at night, they basically go into on-call status and then they get called out. And so when they sleep, they like to be in a place that's comfortable for them, since they're basically need to get as much sleep as they can before they get called out. And in some nights, they might get called out and they And in some nights they might get called out and they might be up all night. Depending on what happened, you know, just the other night, there was quite a bit of disturbance going on at the trailer park. And they got called three different times over the deal with that disturbance. And that officer was up all night and had to bring another officer in just to relieve him so he could get sleep in the morning. So they like to have a place they can go back to and have it. They do have the, the substation here. But the substation is upstairs in the ACS building. That building is fairly loud because they have a lot of air units running in there to keep the phone system cold or pool. And it's just not a lot of privacy in there. It's not very comfortable. Whereas over in Whittier. When they're on shift, they actually have individual bedrooms. They get really dark and they're quiet and the officer, they get rest. So. So they, they do on the weekends staff people here, especially on big weekends. Last weekend and the weekend before during Oktoberfest, they had people stay the night. And stay in the, in the dorm here and then respond out to calls. You know, they had over the last two weekends, they had several DUIs they had to respond to. So they're able to do that. So they know when they need to be here and the other times it's pretty quiet and they don't need to be here. So they stay over in Whittier. On that aspect, but they didn't want to be tied down that they had to be here at night just because of the flexibility. And sometimes they're short on officers, so they need to be working. From one station so that both can either respond or whatever it may be. So that, that was the way we got to in that aspect. And then the other major changes in here have to do with update to their nine-one-one services. They've moved from E fours to computer aided dispatch record management system, which is pretty standard. And right now they are still with Cordova. Cordova will handle their dispatch. But there are some other communities in Alaska that will, that they, well, they, they're going to put out RFP to see if anybody else is interested in their dispatch. It's not uncommon for remote communities from where you are to handle your dispatch for you. In that aspect. And so it, it works really efficiently when sometimes communities share one dispatch. Because trying to man a dispatch center is really hard. And so if you get many people in there, it makes it more lucrative to. The dispatcher to be able to hire people and pay them better wages so they stay with them and, and become more reliable as a dispatcher. So. Other places like North Pole and. And I think Houston, when they had a police department, they used actually SICA as their dispatch center. And SICA handles trooper dispatch for that region. So they were doing a bit of multiple communities in that aspect. So. So that, that's just an update to the services there. And then down here. I'm sorry, I didn't include this, but I have an update for this and I'll share it with you at the next meeting, is to break down the new cost services for it. I just got it from their accountant. Last week and we've been at a deadline and trail project, so I didn't get a chance to update this and crack it. So. So that's where we stand right now. What we are going to do is. PSAC had no real comments on this. We are moving this to the lawyers to hash out what we've discussed and then we hopefully by the next regular meeting for GBOS. Or PSAC, we may have to have a special meeting depending on how we work out with public safety. We can come back to you with a version that the lawyers have hammered out and then present it. I don't think the lawyers are going to have too much heart with the, with the changes that we're recommending. But it's, it's where we stand at this. So I'll open it for questions. A lot of talk.
Thanks, Kyle. Mike has seen that.
A quick question. Although when Whittier Police aren't in Girdwood at night, they can still respond to issues at night, can't they? Because my understanding is even though the tunnel is closed, they have a way of getting through the tunnel.
Oh yeah, there's never been an issue about them getting through. They have all access to the tunnel and they, they definitely come through. You know, it kind of, it, it's almost similar to the situation that we had with the troopers. When the troopers were here, we would have troopers responding out of Anchorage. And their response time was usually at the least an hour and a half. If those guys get to the tunnel, they're here. Usually in a half hour to forty minutes if they have to be here.
Just wanted to gather that on the record. Do we not talk about no service at night? We're talking about sometimes it's delayed. Yeah.
They're always delayed. Yeah, they can be here, but it may be delayed.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. And in both last packet and this packet, there isn't an appendix A, but I know it's up there because you just showed it. So when you do show it to the lawyers document. Make sure.
Oh, it may just got cut out.
Yeah, I just didn't include it.
No, it's fine. I just. I'll look at last week's. Okay. We'll look forward to that next month. Thank you. And to number six, the liquor license renewals.
This is just standard process for liquor license. So we'll be looking for any objections at the next meeting and it's also going through LUC.
Yep. And so if there are no objections to the renewals, then we'll work on a letter of non-objection and then we'll just send that out every time we get a notification of renewal.
Yep.
There. Thanks for including that. Number seven, discuss actions needed to allow GBOS power to raise funds for housing and economic stability. Mike.
Okay. I've got, I put together a extremely bare bones presentation on this and I'll do it very quickly. I think we understand what the, we understand there is a problem with housing. So here's an idea about one way we can potentially make some progress on it. So I'm going to go to the next slide. So the question we hear, the question you hear quite a lot is isn't housing a problem everywhere? Well, yes, it is. There are just particular problems in, in resort communities and the, the broad argument is, you know, basically economics is balancing supply and demand. In most communities, you have kind of the people who live in the community or also the people who work in the community. So you kind of have, as the economy moves up and down, there's kind of a rough balance between. The economic opportunities in the community and the cost of housing. If housing becomes too expensive, there's no one there to buy it. If housing, you know, if, if jobs disappear. You know, if a factory shuts down, as you were seeing in a number of places through, you know, a long while ago in the Midwest, it happened when I lived in New England in, in Maine. The, in some of the paper mills closed in several main communities. When the economy shrinks, housing prices drop. That's true in nearly every community. Resorts are very different. There's a major demand coming from outside, which is disconnected to the economy of the community directly. So, and generally that's a much more wealthy than the community itself. So you end up with this upward pressure on prices. Upward pressure on housing cost. Things like short-term rentals, et cetera, make that even worse. So. There is a fundamental difference between the way that resorts, resort economies work and housing costs in resorts to, for example, the rest of Anchorage. But again, I don't think that is new to us. It's just a point we need to, need to always talk about. So this is different from what we have to have in Anchorage. If we move to the next slide. Right. This is the bit I think is, this is a change from even just a few weeks ago. So as part of the nineteen ninety-five plan, doesn't really say very much. It does talk about housing. There's a need for housing, but it doesn't go into much detail. When HLB got an opinion that the Crow Creek neighborhood plan is active, is in force and is no longer expired. There is a section in the Crow Creek neighborhood plan which talks about policies. We should follow or things we should do as a community to address the issues of affordable housing. Now, since two thousand and six, it's become more than just. What traditionally people think of as affordable housing in terms of low-income housing. And now we have a problem pretty much, you know, low, mid, mid-high even. So we have a much broader problem, but it does include these rough steps. So. The ninety, the two thousand and six plan says there should be a formal commitment from the community to provide affordable housing. And I'm going to say that this is one step to do that. There should be some creation of management body or affiliation with existing entity. And then we did need to find a funding strategy such as requiring new development to contribute to develop affordable housing. All these things are in the plan. I would say that what we are touching here in this proposal is A and B. C is exactly what we're doing with, with the Holden Hills Housing Advisory Committee. So their proposals are exactly doing C. They're requiring a new development, in this case, Holden Hills, to contribute in some way to developing affordable housing. Ie rather than specifically low-cost affordable housing, address, you know, use that development to address the housing needs of the community. And the last point is just again, that the, the problem is broader. So if we go to the next slide, this is the actual proposal. So. In two thousand and fifteen, I think, I can't remember if it was fourteen or fifteen, but two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, we, Girdwood voted to add itself the power to develop a cemetery. And then in two thousand and sixteen, we voted to provide our own police service. So what we're basically, what this suggestion is, is we provide another service, which I'm calling here, economic and housing stability. We may find a better phrase, but the idea of this is it's, it's a service. It's not. A simple housing service as you would have elsewhere. It's dealing with the instability and the problems that are caused by this mismatch between the economy and housing. And it's trying to stabilize those two. It's trying to address some of the issues with. Housing for employees of businesses. It's trying to address some of them as much as in housing overall. But the idea is it's similar to the cemetery. When we put the cemetery powers together, the intent. Was to have a way where we can spend money and we have the power to both spend money and, and sort of have some control over. Planning for a cemetery, working out how we can end up with a cemetery, doing a feasibility study, generating site plans. And then paying professionals effectively are getting expertise in here. So, so how we can actually implement what we finally want. What we did not commit to was spending taxpayer monies to actually build the cemetery or even to run the cemetery in the long term. So the idea is something similar here of what we would be doing is we would be making a, we would be asking the communities to support. Putting together this power, which means we would then inherently have to be part of any conversation involving housing in Girdwood rather than just. An optional potential advisory group. So we would effectively grab the steering wheel. Of. Aspects of housing within Girdwood. We would have the ability to fund, for example, the, you know, study a housing action plan, which we need. We would have the ability to get help on setting up some entity like described in the Crow Creek neighborhood plan. Either as a new nonprofit or working with the existing nonprofit. But when it comes to actually specific housing programs, like. For example, there's one in some communities called Leaster Locals where you pay a small grant to. People who are currently running short-term rentals or in fact are not using their property. And it's a way to turn it into long-term rentals. Now, that works in some community. It may or may not work here, but we would have the funding to. Get someone to, you know, get someone to actually put together a real proposal of how it could work and then seek funding from somewhere else to, to actually fund it. So you'd have some. You know, somebody either through a nonprofit, an existing nonprofit or new nonprofit, who would, who would be seeking grant funding, looking for opportunities, et cetera.
He's muted himself.
Mike, you got muted. I think you muted yourself there.
Thank you. That was me. Sorry. So we would not be changing the tax capital. We would keep the tax cap at six. Because it's a service area power, by definition, we can only spend money on things which benefit Girdwood. So we don't have the. The complexity, well, the, the issues HLBs often has of where they have to benefit everyone in the municipality. And they can, you know, you can end up with a situation where it isn't necessarily very beneficial to the place where the work is being done. This would have to be limited to benefit to Girdwood itself. And as I said, and as I said before, this is not about creating fat. Creating funds to actually run, to fund specific programs. The intent here is to create a structure which can then get funding for specific programs. And make them work within Girdwood. So it gets us, it gets us formally to the table. We're taking control of the, we're sort of taking control of things in the way we need to. And we clearly have been suffering from not having that. Degree of sort of, you know, influence. And, and it doesn't necessarily involve that much money in the short to medium term. So I, it's probably, it probably will be a bit more than we've spent on cemetery, but that's the kind of order I'm, I'm expecting. I'm not talking about, you know, another two mill a year forever. And the very last point I think was just emphasizing those, the economic stability of why, of why I chose those particular words. But again, we can, we can change this and change the nuance. So it's economic stability because housing is, you know, critical to the local economy. It's affect, you know, it's, it's always affected low income. It's affecting mid-income. It's affecting professionals as well. We don't have a very stable housing market. We're having, you know, a lot of people who do not. Own, even people who are owned have the option of leaving the community, of course, but people are, you know, we have this constant churn of people who want to stay and can't. And really it's that last two points. So the character of the Girdwood community is linked to the availability of stable hand. Housing for those who live and work here. And the final line is something I've seen in other plans as well, and I like that. I think community housing is critical infrastructure for resort communities. It's, it's infrastructure in the same way as roads are, in the same way as a sewer system is, in the same way as, you know, having parks and wrecks and. It's a little different from fire department and police, which are sort of services. But it's, you know, it's a critical part of the infrastructure of, of this community and we have no. We have very little influence on what's being done now. And the people who do have influence are typically not focused on the specific issues around the resort communities. So that's the kind of general concept and we would have to work with the administration. I believe the mechanics are that we would make a proposal. We would have to work with the administration and legal to craft something specific and then the, it would go to the assembly for passage. Although I think we can also work directly with assembly. If necessary. So we have two parts.
Thank you, Mike. Great work on this. Lots of work here. And the message is very poignant right now too. So I think this is. Timing couldn't have come sooner personally, but. Is that how you say it? So thank you for doing this. Any, any comments from the board?
I have a question, Mike. So when you're talking about funding, that, that doesn't come from grants and things and not from our capital contributions?
I do not expect, we're not big enough to start using our, our property tax base to build housing. I don't think that's where we're going to go at all.
Funding for programs and things that.
Yeah, yeah. So think of this as being, think of this as being like the cemetery service. You know, we haven't spent much on that recently, but a few years ago we were doing, we were. Spending money on feasibility studies. We were spending money on the bill, putting together the concept plan. So that's the kind of idea of we could spend money. For example, the first thing we probably want to do is have a, have a specific actionable plan that we can implement. Which answers a lot of the questions that keep getting asked about how we can do with, deal with housing. It would probably also involve. Working with somebody like Neighborhood Works or some other entity to say, you know, what can we within the Alaska. Structure, state level and, and municipal structure, what entity can we put together that's similar to a housing authority? And then when these things are exist, which would be, you know, a couple of years down the road. When these things exist, they would then be going out and getting grant funding. From HUD. So at the moment, I'll from other groups to run these types of housing programs. So they would be running, for example, I use the lease to locals, but there are many others. There's deed restriction programs. There's a whole bunch of them. But the actual funding for those would not be coming directly from our. Property tax base. It would become, we, you know, we would be funding the, we would be funding the infrastructure in terms of expertise to implement them. But the funding to run them would be coming from somewhere else. That's how I would expect this to work. Although we don't have to make that decision today, but that is how I would expect it to work. One example, sorry.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Yeah, we're not going to fund the building, but studies and plans and things like that. We. So would you recreate a separate budget with this and just keep it below, or just when a tax miller just work off?
Well, we would, no, we would have a, capital contributions also fit within the six, six point O tax. So if they're coming from taxpayer funding, they have to fit under the tax cap of six. So this would be another budget item, the same way as we have police and fire roads and parks and records, et cetera. Where we have, I would expect, my guess is we would have, we may, you know, have particular. Like a particular study or a particular, you know, housing action plan at the beginning. And then we would probably have a, you know, a grant or a contribution to nonprofit to do the other work that's needed. Of work out what the entity can be after that. So phase one would be setting up the things we need to set up now. And, and direct that rather than hope some other part of the municipality does it for us. So that would be step one. And then step two would be, you know, implementing the things we need to implement.
I do have one more question.
Yeah. And there's one other thing I want to mention. One of the funding sources that we could get and would involve working with the municipality is that. We do get, for example, we know that one of the pressures on housing here is from short-term rentals. Short-term rentals pay room tax, the same as hotels and everybody else does. And that room tax goes, you know, a third of it goes to the area. Fund of the area, area-wide taxes to subsidize those. Effectively, very little of that comes back to Girdwood. A third of it goes to, by charter, a third of it goes to the convention center. And that couldn't be changed without a charter change. And a third of it goes to the, you know, visit Anchorage. So one can argue that some of the pressure we have on housing here is we are actually, the municipality is receiving tax money and almost has an incentive. To, to increase that. In other communities, that funding would go straight to a housing mitigation fund. And one could argue if we have, again, if we have a power to do that, if we have a service area power and we have someone professional to advocate for it. Then one could make the case that that's where the money. and we have someone professional to advocate for it, then one could make the case that that's where the money should go. But at the moment, you know, if we said we want that money spent on Girdwood, who would take it? Would H L B take it? There's no guarantee that would benefit us. There's no housing department at all in the municipality. And even if they were, it wouldn't necessarily benefit Girdwood. So there's nothing that exists that could even accept a funding source and apply it to the problems we have here. This would give us that entity. It would get basically G B O S would be a funding. It would be a place to put money, but we could either spend it directly or or spend it, you know, working with an entity which actually manages these services. And we could get grant funding like we do with Trails or the, the entity that does the management directly to get the grant funding. And again, we have that pattern of working with nonprofits because our fire department is a nonprofit. You know, our police is a contractor in another city, but again, we do not do the services ourselves. It's, it's done. We manage the services, but it's done through a subcontractor.
Thank you, Mike. Jennifer, did you have one?
A couple of things. Thanks for all your work on this. Ton of work. Just a couple of thoughts that maybe we could finesse this a little bit.
Absolutely. This is very bare bones and I want your expertise.
Well, I want to say for starters that I'm a little uncomfortable with this generating from G B O S because this is an expansion of G B O S powers. Actually, I don't think that it's quite accurate to say that similar to might be similar in some ways to the cemetery, but I don't see the cemetery services as a big expansion power, whereas us developing a housing authority kind of is. Or it certainly has the potential to be, especially with these, like creation of a management body or affiliation. So, so I have a proposal that, you know, I wonder if we could consider begging what is hopefully can be eventually renamed the Housing Action Committee rather than the Holton Hills Housing Action Committee. Because that does triple H's.
Yes.
I, I, I see that as a natural body if they would be willing and I understand we got those people doing that for another job. Sorry. But this would be a really natural conversation, I think, for them to have particularly also because it got mentioned. As part of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, although I have things to say about that too, because it sounds to me like, you know, it's kind of H L B and the administration that's a little bit more interested in that being an active plan. We're working with it. We're doing what they say we have to do, right? But anyway, long story short. If we could, I wonder if we could take this to the Housing Action Committee and say, what do you think? You know, do we need this? What should it look like? And I kind of feel like it would look better to the community, but also maybe wait, I mean, I'd be interested in your thoughts about it, but I think it's also more you're critically correct. If we have somebody else ask G B O S to expand their powers rather than G B O S saying, hey, you know what? I think we should expand our powers. So that's, that's just one thought, kind of right off the top of the head. And I'd also like to see that broad, we worked hard on having that group have different awarenesses about the housing issues. So I'd like to see, like to see what they have to say. And then I also feel.
Sorry, I missed the, I missed the last point.
And then I feel like, and then I feel like whatever they end up recommending should go to land use. And then it comes to G B O S and we say, oh yeah, that's a great idea that we should have bigger powers. Thank you for that. Yeah, we'll vote yes. But you know what I'm saying? Like, I just think it would look better if we could see this through that burden instead of.
It has to be, it has to go through both. I think it's, it's perfectly fine that the idea comes from here. We should know most about what's feasible and what isn't feasible. So what we're, what we're doing here is seeing here's a feasible idea. Let's throw it out to, I completely agree. That the specifics of doing it now, rather than when the same recommendations come through our comprehensive plan is that because the Crow Creek plan was, you know, again, that plan sort of emerged from the dead, if you like. And it has this specific language in there. We have a justification now for doing this. We wouldn't, it would have been harder to justify otherwise. Until similar language, which there are similar items in the vision and goals of the of the area plan of our new rewrite to the area plan to this. So when that got adopted, we could go through a similar exercise. But when H L B brought the Crow Creek Land Use Plan back to life, that sort of gives us the opportunity of doing it sooner. I think this is just throwing an idea out there as something we potentially do. I absolutely agree with you. This has to go. I think this is something that the we want to know what the, the Hold Hills Advisory Committee have to think about this as well. But we're already doing some of the, you know, we're already effectively doing some of the things that's, that are in that plan, and this is one more. And obviously you cannot get, because this would have to go as a ballot to the voters, you cannot get more of a formal commitment from Girdwood to do this than have a official vote of the whole community, which would either pass or fail. That is a formal commitment from the community. And the same with land use. I think everywhere, I mean, Trails can comment on it, of course, as well, but and P S A. But, you know, I think we'd welcome, we'd welcome all, we'd welcome all input.
Thank you. And then go ahead. Yes.
So Mike, there's absolutely no way, you know me. There's no way I couldn't say something about your housing stability bullet points.
Yep.
I, but so, you know, I know we disagree on this one about what exactly is causing some of the issues and what, and I'll just reiterate that as someone who's been in a long-term market for a long time, there's no, there's no economics to it anymore. But also we have to be careful of what bullet points we put out there.
Yes, I understand.
We just approved a S T R study. Let's see what it says, right? It's not going to answer that question, but anyway.
It's not going to answer that question.
Maybe we could just, as we present this, maybe we could just, just say that it's just real simple, right? That the economics in our town right now are not conducive for long-term rentals. And we don't have to blame it on anything. It's just, I think that's kind of big, somewhat inarguable that the economics aren't working because of the disconnect between local regions and property values. Long-term rentals are no longer viable economically for those situations.
I'm very happy with that. That I really value. So the, the intent of this is to get a discussion started. Your input is extremely valuable. I'm quite happy with that. The main point is, I would say the main point in this slide is actually the thing, oddly in red. The, the, the term is, the focus here is on kind of community housing, housing for the community. And that's the kind of key differentiation, exactly what details about, you know, what's led to a certain pattern. And everything else is arguable. There are, there are studies out there. There are research papers and academic work, but we don't, you know, we don't need to argue that now. And we definitely don't need to emphasize it. The point really is that we have a, we have a current housing market which is dominated by housing, which is for not for the community. It's important housing. There's absolutely a, a role for that. But it's basically strangled and pushed out of the nest, if you like. What is, what would normally be considered community housing? And that's what we need to focus on. So I completely agree with you and I really would appreciate it. This was thrown together as something we can, I wouldn't say thrown together. I put this together fairly quickly as something we can as something we can start discussing rather than just have words. I wanted to make sure there was something visual. And I'm very happy with any revisions and changes to the message, but the concept is what I'm really talking about.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to extend the meeting if that's needed for housekeeping.
Move to extend by fifteen minutes.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Any objections? Okay, thank you, everyone. And the last thing I was going to add is I agree with everything that you are bringing up too, but I, I wasn't here during the 2014 process in 2015, but because I've been on the cemetery committee, I know that it took Tommy O'Malley and other people, but I believe a lot of private board of supervisors to start the momentum there on that movement. And it was because cemeteries are basic infrastructure. And from nineteen fifteen, that President Woodrow Wilson made it an executive order that cemeteries would be funded and that's why the Anchorage Memorial is there. And then because that is running out of room, we'd help offset that by this one and Eagle River hopefully would help the Anchorage Cemetery. So that's, that helped Girdwood make their own bond, kind of not bond, not bond, but passing their own vote to tax themselves. Are we good with number seven? Okay, let's go to number eight, which is the cemetery request for a G B O S resolution of support for the proposition this spring. And Tommy O'Malley was here last week. He's not here tonight. I can try to speak to this unless Margaret, you have anything to say? Well, it's been pushed over a year, but this would have been ideally last spring, but because of Eagle River being not on the same page as Girdwood and COVID delays. This was, this is needs to be on our ballot so that we can approve something that was very much in support years ago. So it was twenty sixteen and twenty fifteen that Girdwood really made all of the studies happen. The schematic report is all online on our website, but it has huge support and it has, Tommy's working on contacting all the assembly members and then he tasked me with continuing that effort. So I called a few and the assembly is very much in support. But it's just a matter of how we get the funds and bonding does look like the most successful route because Eagle River and Girdwood and then renovations to the Anchorage Memorial would all be in the same bond. So it'd be citywide and we would all be offsetting Anchorage's pressure for public burials is the space that's running out of room. So someone could say, oh, well, I'm going to the military graveyard. Doesn't matter, but it's the, it's everybody that benefits from it. So he'll probably be here next. Kyle?
And I'll just point out the funding of this bond would be an area-wide bond. So it would be the whole area wide, just not Girdwood who'd be paying for this. So, so it would be spread out across the whole municipality because it's a area-wide service.
Thank you. And so he, Tommy wanted to do between now and April fundraising and just educating voters so that they know exactly what Kyle just said. It would be April's bond and then community meetings between now and then. So all the community councils, so that they can be aware.
Just is that, is that resolution in our packet or if not, is Tommy going to put that together?
Oh, right.
Yeah, this is new business and so it's just preliminary. And actually, the cemetery committee hasn't met as a committee now for a couple of months. So they'll be a meeting in another couple of weeks. And yeah, I think that the onus will be on Tommy and Brianna to come up with language to provide to the supervisors to take a look, but there's there's some examples of other requests for support for bonding. And, and then it goes to the, the reason this needs to come up pretty soon, and I would provide this having to do with the topic just before this is that it takes some time to get the language for the assembly to approve and for it to go through legal in order to show up on the ballot. And also keeping in mind that although the election in our heads is in the beginning of April, it's mail-in. So the actual, everything is forward by quite a bit. It doesn't do any good to talk to community councils after people have started to or maybe finished voting.
Right.
So anyway, it's, it's kind of a different animal now to prepare for than it used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to make sure somebody was on this, but writing that I assume you'll behold this next next meeting, we'll want to vote on and get it going.
Right.
And Tommy would let things slide, but just make sure somebody's there to write it for next month.
Anything else? Go to number nine, discuss our M O A G B O S quarterly meeting agenda and there, back the packets. So slated for October twenty fourth at four o'clock. And up there is twice.
Right. So this is just a reminder of the things that we talked about back in July and things were different back then. That's been a, a big few months. I would say probably the public safety contract is, you know, the text will be different, but you'll want to encourage them to move that forward.
And we've gotten support from the municipal manager. She did get us with the lawyer who's going to help us through this process. So we are, we'll be working with them this week to get that process started.
Is there any need to actually talk about it if it's already in action, unless there's something that we need to deal with?
I think encouraging it to get signed as fast as we can.
We could probably just give an update on the calendar and just let the municipal manager know it's coming her way for a second.
Thank you.
Because it needs to get signed by Whittier as well. So we had a little bit of a stressful thing the last time around. I'm not sure where you are with the fire department and discussing things with Anchorage about the E M S funding.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to keep that in there. They're not going to do it. They don't, you know, so, because I don't think it'll ever be a line item. Contractor dual. I'm personally, you know, Michelle might think differently, but I don't know if that's going to do us any good. Bringing that up every time.
Yeah, I think that's going to have to be, we haven't really heard from the fire board coming to G B O S to push that item at this point in time. So I think we could pull this for now and keep it to the next quarterly meeting. I would suggest.
I'd suggest if it's I suggest that Aliens Stewart Highway interchange, it could be, it would be prudent or not.
Probably would say that Ms. Polly is not going to get involved with that.
Okay.
You know, they, the only thing that really does is if the D O T tries to push on that frontage road to us. But yeah, I think Mike wanted to go back to that fire department.
Okay, sorry. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was actually going to suggest we, we, we pose a question to Amy before the meeting, the municipal manager, and ask about progress on fixing the funding problems between fire and E M S. Because that was worked on in the past and she did say that they were going to look into what was done in the past on that. And I think that's, that's kind of the big problem that's behind all of this.
The question would be to see if they're examining how to fix the funding issues that.
The one-third, yeah, one-third is spent on fire, two-thirds is spent on E M S, yet the money raised is one-third E M S, two-thirds fire. That needs to be fixed municipal-wide.
We could forward that on.
Yeah. So there'd be really be a question and then just we'd hear if there's progress on that or not.
Any other suggestions?
I would say rather than having H L B, sorry, rather than having H L B, I would say we have one topic on a Holden Hills specifically. And then I think we will need to ask the municipal manager and get the, at least make the administration aware if we're going to progress on the, on the service area power. So we could use that as an opportunity to ask some questions. Sorry, Margaret.
No, not at all. I was thinking that a separate topic might be bonding items because we may have the cemetery and then also this.
That'd be good.
So a separate Holton Hills conversation?
Yeah, one conversation, one conversation for Holden Hills, one for bond, and then one, if we choose to, we'll discuss it at the next meeting. But if we choose to, it'd be the potentially a service area power, given that we have to have the municipality involved, the administration involved in that conversation.
Yep.
I have a question.
Okay, Jennifer?
I wonder if, if it would be pertinent or wise to ask the legality question again? I mean, would this be a place that we could ask that since that question
Yes.
seems to have stalled out?
That should be part of the Holden Hills question, yes.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
And I, sorry, one other question. I don't know if it's relevant to our business or not to also ask the FOIA question. But we've got FOIA sitting out there from the community that have not been answered in the, in the legal, even part time. Brooks in particular, I think, has settled in.
Was I a question? Sorry.
Yeah, that's a question. Do you guys, well, I'm for the whole board, not just you personally. But it's, it's about whether or not it's also. But it's, it's about whether or not it's also appropriate to ask about community FOIA's that have not been answered. Yeah.
It's kind of on the edge, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think it'd be good to remind them, you know, I don't think that hurts. So, you know, I mean, they're, they're not going to be able to answer the question. People, people know.
Margaret?
Well, there is public comment on the agenda. That individual might, because it hasn't come here, it probably would be more appropriate for it to be asked.
Having, having said, sorry. Having said that, if there's an item about Holden Hills in general, any supervisor could of course ask the question about the FOIA. You know, we're, we're representing our constituents. While it may not be an agenda item, it's a perfectly valid question to come from any of us during that discussion.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I think that's totally doable. I just agree with Margaret in this, since we don't want you guys to start chasing FOIA requests and doing that for everybody who has a FOIA request into the, having GBOs become a secretary essentially.
So it shouldn't be an agenda item, but it might come up in discussion.
Couple of minutes left. Anything else for number nine?
So there's another, other items that have been discussed recently were solid waste services, secure trash regulation and Girdwood capital projects. So I feel like those are pretty well underway, one way or another. I don't know if there are other items. So what I have then is public safety, fire department. Perhaps there's a question happening outside of this meeting, Holton Hills, Bonding 2024. So we'll look at that at your next meeting and you can add or take away.
It's small, dear, so Margaret, the, the question about service area power is not a bonding question. So I would like that be treated separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, for the list. Okay, moving to reports. Any other reports are in the packet? Anything from Kyle or Margaret?
Nothing.
I have a report really briefly, if you will, that's, I'm sensitive from our last meeting. So we passed the 2023 budget unanimously and in the Parks and Rec budget for Kyle's salary increase. For the formal process, we needed to send another letter to, in this city manager said, to send it to HR to notify the Director of Labor Relations. So I did that and that's Frailene Griffith. And then they put together a memo that goes to the mayor and then the assembly approves the whole budget. So if anyone would like to sign that, it might look really great if all of us are signed on it. Please let Margaret know. And I drafted the letter the other day. So I'm doing what the city manager said to do for the formal process. That's all I have for that.
Just say thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kyle. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn? Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Productive meeting, thanks.